It is six o'clock. I'm calling the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Meister.
Present.
Councilmember Beltran.
Present.
Councilmember Wyrock.
Present.
Vice Mayor Correlo.
Present.
Mayor Flores.
Present. I invite you to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Correlo, and please remain standing for an invocation or moment of silence. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that would like to come forward and do the invocation?
Dear Lord my Father, we're so thankful for this evening and the day that we've had, and we're thankful that we have the freedom to come together and to voice our opinions to the City Council of Porterville, California. We love this city, Father, and we're only concerned about what needs the city has. And we pray that you'll be with the City Council tonight in their hearts and in their minds as they make decisions that affect the people of Porterville. We love thee, Father, and thy Son, Jesus Christ, and we're so grateful for all the blessings you give us individually and also for blessing our city. We love thee, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? You may be seated. We will now go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. You will be asked to please state your name and city for the record. And once again, I will reiterate, we will adhere to the three-minute timeframe per minute speaker, and that way City Council in an orderly fashion can proceed with their decision-making responsibilities this evening. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Please do so now.
Hi, guys. Alexis Espinosa. I reside in the county but relatively close to Porterville. I timed myself, so I hope I can do this. Good evening, Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor Correlo, Councilwoman Meister, Councilwoman Ryrock, Councilwoman Beltran, and city staff. Thank you for your time and for your listening ears. Sorry, I hope I can get through this. For the record, I am here before you tonight not as the local reporter you've come to know and love, but as a concerned individual who was once looking forward to utilizing the promoted 40,000-square-foot library facility. And to see that the plan for that may have changed is disheartening. Losing the library I and many people in this community were so familiar with was a tragedy within itself. But to read that the future library facility to be considered tonight is not what was dreamt up by the people and practically promised to the community adds insult to devastation. If you were to remove the wall between grocery outlet and the existing facility, you would have a space that is just as big, if not bigger, than the 24,000 feet proposed. This is laughable, especially when you take into the fact that the previous library was only 15,000 square feet. The current location is only 8,000 square feet, so to say you're going to build something three times bigger than that when you initially promote it something five times bigger is dumbfounding. The city has or anticipates to receive funding specifically for this library development. We all knew it would be expensive, and that is to be expected when looking at any type of construction. But when the dais has sat and promoted a large state-of-the-art facility with an abundance of amenities, did they not think about the costs associated? Why have you gone through all the processes to narrow down what the community wanted only to snatch that away and give them something different? Cutting the size practically in half is unexpected and unacceptable. I understand the need for funding, but the city up to this point has made it seem like they were or would be covered for a facility of that size and quality. I also understand that the library is a hub for children, and during a public design meeting it was suggested that a large portion of the future library focus on providing an abundance of space to cater to children to reduce the size of the future facility while still keeping what the community wants in mind. Initially turns what is supposed to be a state, a modern and somewhat advanced facility for everybody virtually into a daycare. This really baffles me, and I am not happy about it at all. I value my time in my library, both alone and with my son. A library is meant to enhance your community, not enrage it. But tonight, we are enraged. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alexis. Please hold your applause. Would somebody else please like to come forward? Please do so now under oral communications.
I started when I talker. Thank you for having me. It's a privilege to be here. Thanks to you for all the citizens of Porterville behind me right now. We have a beautiful crowd. My name is Matthew Scott. I was born here in 1998 at Sierra View Hospital. Moved away for a little bit, just moved back in 2022. I grew up in Visalia. I think I left that out. And I'm disgruntled a little bit with the way this city of Porterville works. I used to work at GameStop right here on Henderson. Used to work at the casino, and I saw what broke my heart the most was children in the street with, you know, tattered bicycles and boys being boys and kids being kids in general. But what broke my heart was that these kids don't have a third place. Got an alarm going off, but I don't have any medication to take, so we're okay. These kids don't have a third place. I was privileged enough to grow up in Visalia that had a Boys and Girls Club. I don't know if you guys know Denzel Washington. He's a big actor. He's a big vouch for the Boys and Girls Club. Socioeconomically, right, not every kid can afford the heart program and avid. But we could all afford the Boys and Girls Club. And not that I take away from the importance of a library. Public education is one of the foundations of this country, this beautiful nation. But I also very, very well think that children are the future. And if we don't create a third place for children, we're damning ourselves. We shoot ourselves in the foot, you know? And I think it's up to you, you five, to make that change, to take my voice and let it be heard, you know, like... These kids, no one's a criminal. You know what I mean? No one's a criminal. That's the beauty of this country. No one's guilty until proven not innocent, right? But I think we make criminals when we don't give them the opportunities to be anything else but criminals, if that makes sense. Thank you for your time. Shout out, Porterville. You guys got a great, good-looking... Stop looking at me like that. You're making me nervous.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
My name is Kristen Redford, District Five. I live in Porterville. I would like to speak regarding the new library facility. I've gone over the agenda for tonight and noticed that you're considering the costs of the 40,000-square-foot facility that was initially proposed, and I urge you to not downsize to build a smaller library. Our previous library that was constructed in 1953 was 18,000 square feet. I'm a longtime user of the library's programs and materials. My children and I attended many events there, including weekly storytime with reading and singing, game tournaments, craft days, and holiday celebrations that spanned across the first and second floors. It was lovely, and it was crowded. While our interim library of 8,000 square feet is celebrated and warmly appreciated, the need for a larger library facility is still necessary. In 2022, Porterville went through a rigorous process and was selected as the recipient of the California State Library Grant for $7.26 million. This grant was written and applied for with the specific intention to build a 40,000-square-foot facility. Grants can only be applied for after needs assessments are completed. There have been several surveys, focus groups, and needs assessments completed, which my children and I have worked to be a part of. 40,000 square feet is considered the minimum size to meet the needs of Porterville. When Tulare built its 30,000-square-foot library in 2010, its population was over 59,000. Our population from the last census was over 62,000. You are currently entertaining the idea of a library size less than 25,000 square feet, less square footage for a larger population to serve. We've understood since 2020 that the insurance money, which seems to be about $8.2 million according to the spreadsheet attached to tonight's agenda, we understood it would not fully fund a larger facility, which is why you've been applying for grants and completing the studies necessary to do so. Please listen to those studies. Porterville is large and growing. We need designs that continue to allow us to grow. Please continue to pursue all avenues to cover our costs so that we don't settle for less than our community deserves. This concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please hold your applause. We are conducting a meeting. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Donna Silves. I've worked for the library for 17 years. I have concerns as well about making this library smaller. It would be very nice to be included in discussions about the library. We seem to be out of the loop, and we are on the front lines. We get the questions every single day, and we have nothing to tell them that's accurate because no one's informing us. So it would be really nice if we could be included in things. We, library people, have not even met with the architects yet. The public has, the library commission has, but we who are there working the library have not been seen or heard. Over these 17 years, I've seen numerous surveys and studies and all this stuff. Nothing happens. When I was there for five years, they said, "Oh, five years, we'll have a new library." Five years came and gone. No library. Then another five years. There'll be a new library. No. And then we heard 2030, and it's like, okay, I'm 72. I plan on retiring in three years to get 20 years with the city. I'd like to work in this new library. And the day of the library, we are standing out here watching our livelihood go up in smoke and not knowing if we would even be laid off. So I commend the city for hanging in there with us and keeping us busy, but we'd still like to be told when things are being discussed so that we can be part of the discussion because we're the ones handling the patrons and the books. We did over 41,000 pieces for this temporary, and we'll need at least that for the new library. So that's all I have to say. Just keep this in mind when you're making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Soto. I'm an educator here in Porterville. I work on the East Side, part of Merrily. I feel, as somebody who grew up in Woodville and came to Porterville for education, the lack of having a library in my own area and the other areas such as Terabella, Strathmore, Springville is something that can... Pardon me. Should've wrote these out. Is something that should have been thought of, not only the downsize, but other communities around Porterville that will be affected by the downsize. Porterville is growing, but also these communities outside of Porterville are growing as well. And I believe by the downsize of this project will affect also these communities surrounding us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
I typed this out so I can stay on point. My name is Tamara Clifton. My daughter is an employee at the Porterville Library. It's been four years since the fire at the old Porterville Public Library. We lost two firemen, and we lost local history. Staff were worried about losing their jobs, and the public was without the valuable resource that is the library. After years of public surveys asking what we would like to see in our new library, hiring architects who graciously met with the public to hear our needs, and receiving the grant to achieve these needs, we are being told that the full grant will not be implemented towards the ideas and needs your community has expressed. The community has been making do with the temporary library location, but the space is inadequate. The location is not safe. The police are called on a regular basis. The space is too small for the events that take place. There's no private study areas. There's no real office space, no community area for events, not enough space for materials, and the list can go on and on. But the main point is the library cannot sufficiently provide the public with the space it is being given right now at this time. Although the staff has gone above and beyond to make do because their love for their library, they want to see it thrive just like us. They have no choice but to make do. Luckily, the staff at our library are some of the most patient, ambitious, and goal-oriented people, my daughter being one of them. So they've been very successful with the little opportunity and space they've been given, but they've been accomplishing all of these things with the hope and aspirations that the new library will be built, as promised, to the highest quality that our community deserves and needs. To tell your community to express their ideas for the new library, promise the community it'll be done, and then receive a multimillion... I'm sorry, I'm so bad at speaking. Receive a multimillion-dollar grant just to turn around and say it cannot be done will not suffice, especially when we've been eagerly anticipating you following through on your end and getting this library built. This grant was given to build the new library. To use the money for anything else would be unjust. The community loves and adores their library, and we want to see it grow to its full potential. To not use the budget towards its intended purpose would be, again, unjust. Our community deserves transparent communication on why it's been four years without beginning construction, and we deserve to see a new library built using the full amount of the grant. So I typed that up because I'm a bad speaker and I stutter and whatever. But on top of that, I just want to say I have my four children. Three of them are in their twenties. My youngest is 14, and the library has always been a good place to take them. And now I have a two-year-old grandson, and I have a granddaughter on the way. And I look forward to having a bigger place that I can take my kids and grandchildren and so on and continue on the legacy of Porterville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there someone that would like to come forward? Please do so now.
Good evening. Brian Redford, address on file. Reading a statement from a community member who could not be here under the very short notice that the meeting was called for an Emily Keel in District One. Let's revisit some numbers. The city of Tulare built their library in 2010 when the population was 59,273, and their library was 30,000 square foot. By this logic, with Porterville's population comparable to Tulare's population in 2010, we should expect absolutely nothing less than a 30,000-square-foot, 40,000-square-foot, 24,000. It's just not okay. It's not going to serve us. For scale, our library, which burned down to the ground, was 18,000 square foot. Need a library at least double that size. Need to trust the architects the city hired. Our city needs a 40,000-square-foot library. Porterville continues to grow. That's what's great. There's a lot of space around us. Affordable housing is being built. That opens doors for families. Families use, families need libraries. We shouldn't trifle with anything that affects the growth of our community. Libraries don't just do books anymore. Modern libraries are community centers. Loaning books is a small fraction of what they do. The architects know this. In fact, they have designed numerous libraries in our modern, ever-changing technological age. I was at the meeting. It was amazing. These architects conducted a number of surveys and worked closely with the community to ask questions like, what do young people in Porterville need to be happy and successful? For those of you who are literacy tutors, how can a library designed to support you in this important work? Statistics are out there for the overall education and literacy of Porterville. It's not pretty. This is a way to help that. And what issues does Porterville face? The architects made their findings public in a 163-page document available to anyone online. They crafted it to us, to our community. The needs assessment was done and paid for. To cut the legs out from underneath this facility is unconscionable. There's... Not everyone in Porterville could be here. The seating arrangements is also... Because they're still working. They're out there. They're picking our food. They're selling our groceries. They can't be here. They trust you to represent them, to do what's going to last for the next 50 years, 60 years. This library could be your legacy. Don't cut yourself short and don't cut the city short. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
Brock Neely, address on record. I'd just like to let you know that past councils have left you a great big pile of bull doo-doo. They converted unlawfully from a Board of Trustees for the library to a Library Literacy Commission. State law states the public library shall be managed by a Board of Library Trustees, consisting of five members to be appointed by the mayor, president, or the Board of Trustees, the other executive head of the municipality with the consent of the legislative body of the municipality. That's Section 1890 of California Ed Code. The Library Board of Trustees, according to state law, has the authority to spend, build, rent, lease, and equip libraries, not the City Council. This change was made after the passage of Measure H, and the Board of... The City Council at that time saw a pot of money that they wanted to control and consolidating power. I strongly recommend that you revert it back to a Board of Trustees because if not, Senator Hurtado will be presenting this information to Rob Bonta, the Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
Hello. Hi, my name is...
It's me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to kindly ask you to remove your cap as you're... Thank you so much.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I meant no disrespect.
That's okay.
My name is Lindy Ellis. I am here to approach the City Council this week on behalf of a friend. I think she was looking into starting a nonprofit organization, but I think that this could be so huge, starting an equestrian therapy program in Porterville backed by the city. You know, we all know that post-COVID left a huge hole in our communication. We know that a lot of the children are on electronic devices and don't know the joy of growing up outside across the country. There's been numerous advancements made, bringing animals into prisons. And this woman and I feel that bringing an equestrian therapy program to Porterville could not only help in schools, with hospitals, with the various law enforcement agencies and rehabilitation programs, but also teaching about anxiety in various workplaces and things like that. So I wanted to approach the city to see if there could be any backing. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so now.
Hello. Good evening, City Council. Man, new faces, right? Well, one face is still familiar since last time I've been up here. I just came to speak against the downsizing of our library or what seems to be, I guess, an idea that's being thrown up there. I personally believe that that's a bad idea, just in general. I think the downsides of this are pretty obvious, and I would have assumed that this is something that would have never crossed the mind of our City Council because it's like, it's the library, you guys, right? Right? So, you know, I like to read a lot. I don't really go to the library a whole lot, to be honest. I've been fortunate enough to, I can, you know, read books online or maybe even buy myself some. And that's... And occasionally, I'll go to the library and check it out. And that's, you know, that's my blessing, right, that I can do that. But a lot of people aren't in the same situation as I am where they either can't, you know, get some books of their own or they can't access, you know, Wi-Fi computers on their own, right? And sometimes people do have that stuff, but they just want to get out of the house, right? It'd be, you know, be talking about the everyday folks here, you know? Someone said that most people in town can't make it today because they're out working and stuff. But I think that, you know, also considering that California consistently ranks like towards the bottom or if not last when it comes to literacy rates in the United States, I would have thought that that's also another reason why I thought this was sort of a no-brainer type of, you know, situation going on. I'm not saying that this library alone is going to raise the stat for the entire state, but it definitely, you know, cutting the budget in half or even, you know, by like 45% or 30% or whatever, definitely isn't going to help those numbers, you know? And someone had mentioned too that libraries are just a lot more these days, right? There are more than just books. There's Wi-Fi, media. It's where people get together to do, you know, group projects, to learn about, you know, or they have like Learn English Language, right? So we want our immigrant communities and people like that to become more incorporated and a part of this community, whereas in spaces like the library that they're able to do that. So I believe that we have a real good chance of not messing this up by just going with the plan that we've been more or less sticking with. the plan that we've been more or less sticking with, sticking with the budget and the square footage and the amenities that were, you know, planned. And if any money isn't going to be getting spent in the construction and buying of new things for the library, well, then we can use that money for programs once the library is open, you know? So that's my two cents, and we, you know, we make the right choice here.
Thank you.
Would you say your name to the right?
Oh, yes. My name is Raul Garcia, and I live like here in Porterville as well.
Is there someone else that would like to come? Please do so.
My name's David Horowitz. I think, I understand that people want this library, but I think we also have to understand something about being fiscally responsible. This is something that's not been happening in our community for a long time. We have a lot of debt to pay. If you were a personal, if you were an individual with all this debt, you would not be happy. You would say, well, I already have all this debt. Why would I go and spend all this money and give me another 20, 30 million dollars more in debt? Doesn't sound like a really intelligent thing to do. So I think what we need to do here is figure out what's more important, being fiscally responsible or building a big, beautiful library that, as this gentleman so aptly put, he mostly goes online to read books and does things online, but every now and then he goes to the library. Well, I'm sorry, statements like that tell me that why are we going to spend 40 million dollars on a library that people can go online, they can get books online, they can take classes online, they can do it right from the comfort of their own home? With, with the differences today in technology, libraries unfortunately don't get used as much as they used to. So is it fiscally intelligent for us to go and spend all this extra money on a building that's going to have limited use for the community? Because quite honestly, if you speak to most people in the community and you say, everybody who's been to the library in the last two years, raise your hand, you're going to see very few hands go up. In this room, they're here to support the library. I get that. I get that. But this is a very small portion of the community. And if you're willing to put up the money, if you're willing to increase our taxes, then that's, I guess, what's going to happen. It's the majority rules, but I'm telling you that...
They're already paid for. We already have the money.
Please hold your conversations.
First of all, we don't have the money.
Please hold your, please, Mr. Horowitz. You still have time.
Yeah, first of all, we don't have the money, people. We're going to have to take out a bond to pay for a lot of the library. We do not have anywhere near the funds to build this piece of property. We don't. So that's the reality of it. Now, if you got 20 million, you can cough up. Hey, we'll be more than happy to take your 20 million and build this property the way you want it. But unfortunately, I don't want my taxes to go up. I'm sure everybody, when you want to start talking about taxes, oh, wow, they're all of a sudden they're going to go, wait a minute. We already have a high tax rate. We want to raise it more when we're in a community of people who don't have large incomes. Let's be fiscally responsible here. That's important.
Thank you. And I'm just going to make one comment before I invite someone else for oral communications. We will be respectful under oral communications to what everyone has to say. We are here to listen, and that's what's important. So please be courteous to each other, and I want to, I don't want to see any outbursts while someone is at the podium because they are speaking, just if you've already spoken, you've already had your time. Please, I invite someone else to please come forward now under oral communications.
Good evening. Ed McHurley, District Four. Yeah, I was looking through the budget, and it looks like about $120 million worth of things we want to do. And we're probably not going to be able to do about half of them, so we really got to look hard at what the priorities are. And I would just, you know, for perspective, we do have the highest tax rate, higher taxes than San Francisco already, so we need to be careful about that. We are still paying for bonds for roads from 20 years ago. And if we want to go out and, and ask the people for more bonds, we're going to continue to be in debt and dependency. That's not a recipe for growth in our city. So we need to be careful. Now, I think, you know, as a businessman, what we have to do is always look at what we have, make some trade-offs, and make some decisions. You know, when I was young, I used to go to the library, took karate at the library. And I was so poor, my grandmother had to make my uniform. I used, my mom used to drag me to the library, and we'd go to the Weight Watchers meeting. And I went to Storybook Hour as a kid. But the library is a community center, and it's really important for our community. But when I went there when I was in college, there was no books there to do a research paper. So our idea of what the library is and what it really is needs to change with the times. And I'll make a suggestion. We're putting in a community center over on Fourth and Henderson. We need to combine these projects. You can take the 15 million that you have, not go into debt, and add it to that grant project over there, and expand it, and make that community center what it mostly is, as a community center with a library, and make it better. And we can combine two big projects and get something big done in this city. And we don't have to sacrifice and make a smaller library that won't serve the needs of the community. I really feel strongly about this, and going into debt right now with the economy and the direction that it's going in is a bad recipe. It's not a recipe for growth. We need to be thinking clearly about these projects. The most important thing right now in our city? The roads. They're crumbling, and they're not getting fixed. We need to spend a lot more time on the basics of this city right now than trying to go into debt to build something that's just maybe an idea in somebody's mind. Because the reality is, the library is mostly a community center. We've had some trauma in the city. There's some men that lost their lives serving this community to try to save that property and save others, and we need to respect them by building a memorial for them, but that's separate from this process. It's not the same thing. Let's build a community center. Let's combine some projects. Let's be physically responsible and help everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
Hello. My name is Robert Ramos. I live here in Porterville. I am a student with Porterville College. I also work alongside the college with our student workers and our tutor program. If we are to talk about fiscal budgets or anything to happen in the local economy, none of that can occur without prioritization of education in this community. What that is, is a local library fit for disabled students, students who do not speak English, and those who have trouble with academics. If we are to fix any issue in our community, it starts with education. Education that starts in the library. If you want to talk about roads, or taxes, or money, that is fine. However, this meeting is not about that. It is about education. We have the budget promised for a library that was promised in former meetings. It is not my job to budget fiscal accounts. It is not the community's job. It is the city council. So if that is to be brought up in the discussion, it is not on us. It is on the people who I am looking at in this room right now. Education is owed to the people, and that starts in the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forward? Please do so now.
My name's Bruce White. I'm a lifelong resident of Porterville. This meeting, as I understood, it was about setting priorities. I don't envy you. There's a limited pie of dollars, and a lot of people that want to spend it how they want to spend it. So I'm not going to make any friends tonight, probably. I live out on Plano, and I just honestly, my property is being destroyed by the college project. I had over 100 trucks through my front yard yesterday morning, and the traffic on Plano is so bad already that I'm having to go to the doctor because I don't sleep at night. The decibel noise level out there is just horrific, and, and there's been no mitigation factors done on this project. And as I understand it, you're going to vote, or already have voted, to abandon College Avenue. I'll just be blunt, that's brain-dead. You need two points of egress and regress on both the east and west sides of the college for the development project to make this work. Plano was never intended to be the thoroughfare freeway that it has become already, and that's without finishing the project. So I invite all of you to come spend the night with me. I have a wonderful place out there. I'll fix you breakfast, and at 6:00 in the morning, we'll sit on my front yard, and I'll, I'll let you see what the real numbers of traffic is right now on Plano. And, and I realize you got limited dollars to spend, and so I'm making my pitch that we spend some of that to help the community that already lives out there survive this project. You know, I went out and talked to the developer today from the Kern College District about helping those poor people get a fence or some kind of noise reduction system along that new road they're putting in. He, he was a joke. He couldn't tell me what the decibel noise level reduction of the material they were going to use would be. You know, he was just basically blowing smoke up our shorts. And anyway, I could go on and on. It's probably too late for me. My doctor says, Bruce, you need to get out of there. How are you going, you know, it's just crazy. You can't even live at my house right now. And if you're going to take all the traffic that goes down College Avenue from Plano and just you turn them around and send them back onto Plano, you're making the problem worse. And, and here's my pitch. Allowing College Avenue to go through like it still does and putting the road in that goes through at Farmer's Tractor won't stop the project. You could still do it. You'll just have two points of egress and regress, and you can still do the project. So I'm not anti-growth, but you know, I heard that thrown out, and I'm like, hey, if you guys want to talk about growth, I own four trucking companies. Let me run 100 trucks an hour through your front yard and then talk to me about growth. It's just, so my pitch on the library, I'm not going to make any friends here. I think one of the persons here made my point. They put it up on the internet. The internet has killed the library. I raised four kids here.
Thirty seconds to summarize.
Never took them to the library. I vote no on the library.
Thank you.
Spend the money on the traffic.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
Hi there. My name is Felicia Vasquez. I live in Porterville, California. I am currently a peer academic mentor with Porterville College, and in the past I have been a tutor with the college. I work one-on-one with students, and I can tell you right now that resources are very, very, very hard to come by. Online classes are not as easy as they are presented. Internet access is very, very challenging for most students. Access to books is another issue. The plan to go, or the plan to get rid of the library's original promise to the community would be completely devastating. That is a collaborative plan that the community has put forth and has put effort and time into. If you take the demographic and socioeconomic population into account of your city, you know that this is something that is needed. Those resources are needed. That space is needed. So to downsize and to completely dismiss the original plan for the library that was created by the community for the community would be completely devastating for your community that you guys are representing today. So that is my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I got you beat, Josh. Edith Lavon, address on record. Not many of you know that what I did prior to retirement, I had many careers. I was a rancher for 20 years. Our farm, my kids' farm, what we have, we were lucky. We made money, lots of it. I then went to work for the WIB, Workforce Investment Department, worked my way up. I worked alongside the city to recruit businesses to this community before we had people who did that here. Worked back with Marchant and Linda Womack and them. I was instrumental in training about the enterprise zone, so I know a lot about what is wanted. Community, business, communities, we want more for our community. We want Porterville to come into the 21st century. Our demographics are bad because the literacy rate is low. Not all people have access to internet. My son, who lives in Terabella, finally is able to get internet at his house, but it took a long time, and it took services to become available that weren't. A lot of people can't afford them. I know what I pay a month, and it's just me, but I do use my, my internet a lot. Businesses want, they look at the size of the libraries and the services they provide. They look at the income levels. They look at the literacy levels. Literacy levels are important because where are they going to get employees? Now, we have had a library that has been very successful, and I, excuse me, I've had dental work done. I support our library. The smaller one we had before, it was amazing they were able to do what they did. Services have moved up. People can bring their own computers and work at the library, have the internet access. They can get together and study. They can learn. And if the books aren't there in the library itself, they can order them and have them brought from other places. This is what I did, because I am a history buff. We need the space to do what Porterville needs to do to come into the 21st century. I want to get out of the 60s.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
Hi, my name is Patience Christensen, and I am a resident of Porterville. I am also an educator, and I have the unique opportunity of teaching from fourth to 12th grade. And these students face so many challenges already, just in their life, in their demands on their time, and so many of them are struggling in school as there are not enough Chromebooks to send home. They don't have the internet services. They look to the library. They go to the library to be able to complete their studies, to be able to go to the Early Learning Center, the Adult Literacy Center. They need that space to be able to be successful, and we need to provide it to them. Our future is our children, and all these students coming up, they're the ones that we have to build for and think of as they grow and as they thrive in our community. And when we don't provide the services to help them on their journey, everything falls apart, and we will no longer have a city to be proud of. We will no longer have students coming back and wanting to come back to our city after college, wanting to go to college because they haven't been able to keep up with their studies as they don't have the opportunity to do it. So I really just wanted to say, to please look to the future, and the students that will be our future, they will sit where you are sitting, and we have the opportunity to help educate them by providing these services, by providing a space for them to, to fall, that third space that someone, that someone else was talking about, to help them on their journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
Joshua Soulier, 5th District. You want to talk economics? We can talk economics real quick. A college degree increases the average income of its, of its owner by 250%. On average, it's about a million dollars a year. Your education base starts outside of your school districts. The larger your education base, the more money your city produces. Having the, the necessary size, which has already been established, 40,000 square feet is the bare minimum that you guys have already come up with. Reducing that only reduces your long-term tax base. Want to talk about what it does outside of the education base and outside of economics? Okay. In the month of July, 1,500 kids were fed through the, through the, through the library, through the little library, right over here. They said the only reason they couldn't feed more is because they didn't have the room. Finally, we can talk a little bit about capitalism. You are producing a product. You have asked us what we want for this product. We've told you what we want for this product. We are not willing to settle for less. It is not our responsibility to come up with the shortfall. It's yours. That sucks, not going to lie, but that's your problem. The consistent, consistent response from everybody here, almost everybody here, won't call everybody rational, but whatever, is that they want what you have promised. Don't make the mistake of short, of, of cutting yourself short. It will be bad in the long term. It will be bad in the long term.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Please do so. Please come forward.
Andy Smith, Porterville. Freedom of thought and expression is so critical to democracy that it was enshrined in the First Amendment. If there was any building in any city anywhere that exemplifies the First Amendment, it's the library. It's a place to gather, to share thoughts, to entertain ideas, to collaborate, reiterate, reinforce, commune, and it's also a haven against outward forces. The exemplary course that was taken in regards to obtaining the idea of this library was so democratic. You got the direct feedback. You know what they want. We all had our input. To fall short at the finish line is just heartbreaking. It's terrible. And as far as to saying that the internet of all places is a replacement for the public library, the library is a means of imagination exploration. You can be led along wild flights of fancy. The internet is a robot called an algorithm taking you to extremism. That's not where we want our youth to be. We want them entertaining random ideas. We want them interacting with other human beings, not monsters behind another screen. It is a place for community members to come together at a cost to all community members because it is a shared object. We all owe our due in order to extract from it the benefits of a good society. Please do the right thing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, Renee Kurtley, address on record. This is an old library card, really old. Okay, the person in charge of this is not these people. It's the city manager. She's the one who has the purse strings. So you also lost that grant money that you had for the dog shelter a number of years ago. So are you going to repeat? Everybody in this room that likes the library, does that tell you anything, city manager?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so now.
Hello, Marisa Verrado, resident of Porterville. My first comment is let the library live. I am not a business owner. I do not have the means to host you all at my house and feed you all breakfast. I am not a mother, but what I am is a special needs educator. The type of services you get at a library do not depend on how much money you make or spend. It's a place where if you need help, all you need to do is ask. At this point in time in our economic stability, libraries are our safety social net. Libraries, you know, due to contrary thinking are not just a place for books. Internet, like someone stated, is not a respectable replacement of a library. Personal computers and decent broadband connection concern dozens, if not hundreds of people and families. If we cut this, if we cut this, sorry, this budget, this budget in half, we cut half of those families off. Better libraries lead to higher rate of literacy development and reading competency. As fellow educators have been up here and stated, and I'm sure as all of you know, since COVID, children have relied on technology, but it's not a detriment if you use it the right way. If Wi-Fi and internet and computer and all this technology accessed is from the library, they will not be dependent on their families, which are sometimes low-income. They will not be dependent on that because they have, like was said, a third place to learn. Better libraries stimulate economic activity by attracting both residents and visitors alike through foot traffic. We also support local businesses and restaurants. Better libraries, like I said, lead to higher education and learning. But the best libraries are supported by their local governments. This budget determines the services that would be provided and the resources that should be provided to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? We are going, we are nearing to 7 o'clock, and we need to start conducting our meeting. I will have a couple more under oral communications, and then we will start our meeting.
My name is Ray Dean Strawn, 54 West Danner Avenue, Porterville, California. We had a devastating fire in February of 2020, and that's over four years ago. And I have questions for the city council. Why not build on the property the city already owns? And we went out and bought another property to build it on. Make the library two stories or even three to save money. If you have one foundation, it's much cheaper to go up than out. We need, we need a 40,000-square-foot library that will now cost 40 million plus. Why did we spend so much money on the temporary library? Why can't the new equipment in the temporary library be used in the new library? We still don't know the total dollars spent on the temporary library, because I've asked that question before, and nobody got back to me. It seems to me that the new library has turned into a money pit that the city can't afford. Why did it take three years to have plans drawn for the new library? Why was land purchased to build a new library? Why did we need to spend money on a temporary library and rent a building that the city doesn't own? We have plans for a 40,000-square-foot library scaled down to 24,000 square feet at a cost of 24.8 million. We have a temporary library eating up the insurance money. We aren't even close to breaking ground and are 14.8 million unfunded for the new library. The cost keeps increasing. The insurance money keeps decreasing. I don't know if we will ever have a new library. Whomever or whoever is in charge of this project needs to be fired. I want to talk about Castle Avenue real quick because it involves my family. Lombardi School was built in 2013. That was 11 years ago. The road improvements were supposed to be made by Burton School District. They refused to fix the problem and proceeded to build the school. Now they are going to build over 200 new homes next to Lombardi School, and no one has fixed the traffic congestion problem. It's just been the old game of kick the can without any results. I challenge anyone here tonight to go to Lombardi School on any given school day at 2:00 PM, and you will see a situation that must be fixed. No study is needed, just fix the problem. I don't know why it takes the city so many years to get anything done in this, in this town. The roads in the city are terrible, potholes and breaks in the pavement everywhere. We don't need special studies, roundabouts or fancy islands. We need smooth roads to drive on that won't tear up our cars. Thank you.
Thank you. One more. First, thank you.
My name is Susan Uptain. I live in the city of Porterville. I grew up here. I went to school here, went to high school here, and I taught for 32 years at a downtown I'm also a library commissioner, and I care about my community. When I was teaching school, we were told that prisons are built based on third-grade literacy rates. That's how they plan the prisons, is by who can read in third grade. So it's really important that we do everything we can to promote, to promote the literacy in our city. I've heard a lot of negative comments about the job maybe that the city council has done, and I can appreciate that you have a lot to balance because money is not infinite. Instead of blaming each other and pointing fingers at each other, I would like to see us come together and work out a solution. I'm also the treasurer of the Porterville Historical Museum, who exists completely on the graciousness of this community. It's completely donation-based, and I can tell you that there are many folks in this community that care about Porterville. If we had perhaps a library foundation, a nonprofit, I think we could raise more money. And I think it would be more profitable to put our energy into finding a solution. If we're short on money, I can appreciate that. For heaven's sake, I married my accountant. I know. He keeps me on the short, keeps me on the steady path. He won't let me overspend. I can totally appreciate the fact that money is limited. But I also know that literacy is extremely important, and the library is an extremely important part of that process. So I propose that we start a nonprofit, get some good people in there, and we raise some money, and we solve the problem. That's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. All right. We will now begin the meeting, and we will now move into scheduled matters. Please hold your applause. We are conducting this meeting, and it's for our transparency, and so that the communication can be made, and it's so that you can hear staff and the preparation of their staff report, and we will be going to items. This is now the meeting that we will be conducting. Please begin.
Thank you, Your Honor. The study session before you this evening is a consideration of priority projects for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. The city council has scheduled this study session for the purposes of defining its priority projects for the upcoming fiscal year in support of the city's annual budget development process. As the council is aware, we are in challenging economic times with increased costs for good and services. Because of the stress on both residential and commercial budgets, sales tax revenue is down and costs are up, making municipal budgets tighter than they have been in the most recent years. However, because the city's historical conservative fiscal stewardship, the city can weather these challenges and proceed with projects with a strategic and calculated plan so that the city can continue to endeavor to bring these important projects forward for the residents of Porterville. At its study session last year, the city council identified approximately 11 projects as its priorities, and I have outlined each of those 11 projects in the staff report, the first one being the new library facility. This is intended as an update. Staff is not seeking any direction in terms of what happens with the future library. This is simply an update of where we are today and the status of what has been done to date. So pursuant to the recommendation of the Library Facility Planning Committee, the city council authorized the acquisition of the 3.86 acre parcel across the street from the South County Justice Center, and they purchased that for $702,000 in October of 2022. That was because it was determined that the former site of the library did not have the capacity to what they were projecting would be the needs, and that was based on the needs assessment. So that acquisition was a recommendation by the planning committee. Based on a circulated needs assessment, the assessment recommended a 40,000-square-foot facility with a focus on multi-use and a projected cost that was at that time estimated to be probably about $30 million. Through the RFQ process, the design contract was awarded to Paul Halesian Architects of Clovis, and that happened in August of 2023. With, just recently in April, we did receive preliminary drawings and an estimate of what it would take to construct that 40,000-square-foot facility, which came in 10 million over the estimated 30 million, which is now 40 million. So approximately, what they did was they looked at what the 30 million, the initial budget, would build, and so that came with a reduced footprint of 24.6 square feet, 24,600, and with reduced amenities as well. This was provided for informational purposes. Funding from a variety of sources has been proposed, including the library fire insurance proceeds, which are estimated to be 8 million. The claim on the replacement value of the former library that burned is still in process. We continue to work with our brokers in communication with the insurance company to finalize that claim, but we are projecting to receive a total of 8 million for the replacement value only. There are multiple pots of money in the claims, the various claims associated with the library fire. The claim that is funding the temporary facility is a completely different pot of money. This is called an extra-spent expense claim. So that is not coming out of funds directed to the reconstruction of a new facility. So the variety of sources were identified with the 8 million from the insurance proceeds and 7.2 million in a state library grant that the city was fortunate enough to receive. That grant works by paying half upfront, which we have received 3.6 million to date, and those funds are allocated toward design and the pre-construction costs. And that, those are the costs that are budgeted or proposed to be budgeted in this next fiscal year, '24, '25. So that covers the library. I don't know if you want to take them step by step or if you want me to continue to present.
Shall we go through the whole staff report then come back?
My, my opinion, I think there's some misinformation.
I believe that.
And I think it's good to address this because that was the major voice in the room tonight.
Let's address this one. I would, I would agree with that, that we address this one, and then we'll go with the other ones.
Sure. So I did take a few notes of some of the comments that were provided this evening. I understand there is, you know, against the, a lot of individuals spoke of the, their opposition to a reduced library footprint. Staff is not proposing that. We would never have presented such a big decision in such a small, tiny paragraph buried in an overall budget capital improvement staff report. That decision is not requested to be made this evening, and that would be coming back at a future date. Another comment had to do with the grant not being used as intended. That is just simply not the case. The grant funds that we have received to date, like I said, we received half, which is how that grant works, and those monies have been set aside for design and construction. The, the project is underfunded. It has always been underfunded. It was never fully funded. And so it, with, with the increase in the costs going up to 40 million, it now has a greater deficit, if you will. So if the council does decide in the future that it does want to continue with the 40,000 square-foot facility, we have a shortfall that will be, we need to get those funds from somewhere. So the shortfall, if it is the 40 million, it would be 24.8 million that we still need. So I believe there was a comment about the library board. I, I just have one of the older code books, and as far back as '96, the library board of trustees was advisory. That is the way that the, that board was established with the city council, so it was never its own decision-making governing body. It was always advisory. As far back as I can tell, I will continue to research that going back in time, but when the new, when, when it rebranded as the Library and Literacy Commission, it was, it was from an advisory body named the Library Board of Trustees to an advisory body named the Library and Literacy Commission.
I want to thank you for that. Vice Mayor had a question for you.
I don't have a question. I want to make some comments, if that's okay.
Oh. Well, everyone will have the opportunity to make comment. We were addressing this first, and I want to say thank you. It was important to hear what each and every one of you had to say under oral communications. We wanted you to hear where the project is. of you had to say under oral communications. We wanted you to hear where the project is. We were not, it was something, the information, when you attend our city council meeting, it wasn't planned from one day to the next. We actually, at the last council meeting, authorized a special study session so that we can be as transparent to this regard, and you would have the information and hear it firsthand. Now, I'm going to start this way and ask Councilmember Beltran if he has any comment, anything that you would like to add to the one, before we move on to the other items.
I'll try to make it brief. I know we all have our questions and comments. So thank you for the clarification. I guess, just a theme I heard, I enjoyed the library. I personally promoted a lot of contests and stuff there out of my own pocket, taking my children there, so I do have a special place for that. I don't, it was frustrating to hear that the comments, and I appreciate your guys' passion, but we're not against the library. We're not against what it is. It's just a matter of how to get it done. I was discouraged to hear, I think I wrote down six different people said promised. I don't believe the council ever made a promise. This are a needs assessment, and it was a recommendation that's 40,000 square feet and what have you, and the cost is what it is. So I'm sorry for those people that feel that there was a promise made and a promise not being kept. This is a fluid project. We are, of course, supportive of education. Last, two weeks ago, we did, PUSD did a Starbase things for higher education and that. So this isn't a matter of what we don't want in our, or what we want in our community, it's how do we get it done? You know, there was a comment about bond measures, and that is one avenue, but $24 million is a big gap to try and fund, even through bonds. I would love to have everything, if you were to ask my children. I have a budget. They want a lot of bells and whistles that I can afford. There's some, some stuff that the council does come across that, not necessarily, but just to make it simplified, we put on a credit card, and we will work towards paying that off if it's a need. Government functions, especially for a small city like ours, is to make sure the roads are good, guys have water, the basic, you know, trash. I don't want to make this sound bad, but we are kind of spoiled in Porterville. We have a golf course. We got a swimming pool. We have a city library. We have an OHV park. And there was, what was the other one? We have a lot of amenities a lot of cities don't have, and those all cost money. They don't, they're not self-sufficient. So as we, sorry about that.
Is that your own timer?
Yeah. There wasn't supposed to be a meeting today. This is a special meeting, so. But yeah, I'll leave it at that, because I know we all have this similar opinions and thoughts on this stuff. But no, I want to thank the community for coming out, and I think we share your guys' passion as well. It's just try to, how to get there. So thank you.
Councilmember Wyrock.
I would just also like to echo my thanks for everybody coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts. You were heard. There's been a lot of clarification made, well, not a lot, but there's been some clarification made, and I almost wish we could have paused the public comment after the first statement, when somebody was very emotional about the desire to have a library, and let our city manager kind of explain where we're at and what's really happening here tonight. But it's a transparent process. We now see, and hopefully you all understand, that we've got a way to go. Hearing about some of the, I took quite a few notes. There was one where put a committee together and go dig out the funds, go find the people that want to participate in this. Maybe there are some community people, maybe there's some community, other adjacent communities with those people that are very giving in nature that would be happy to write a check for a plaque over a door leading to some conference room. There were some questions about reusing the equipment, and I know that, I believe there was a fund, and maybe Ms., our city manager could continue explaining some of the funding sources about how the money that we used to buy the books was separate from, you know, a part of the money used to buy equipment and how we're buying, and it can be used over there, and it's not just going to get thrown away. So could you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. I believe you're referring to the insurance claims that we have from the fire. So there are various pots of money from that and different claims, one being we had scheduled assets in our materials, which is, it's really good that we did that. Every year, we would itemize our library materials, and so we had a claim separate for that. We had, like I said, the extra expense claim, and that claim pays for anything above and beyond that we normally would not have had to spend money on, had it not been for the fire. So that goes to pay for our temporary facility. And that, there's a, there's a window, there's a deadline on that, because they're not going to keep funding it indefinitely. But for the time being, they are paying for the temporary facility. They are not paying for things that we normally would be paying for if we had a library. So it's, we analyze, it's, we're still putting expenses into that claim, and we have to analyze it and figure out if it would apply or not, and so it's reconciled on a regular basis between the city and the brokers and the insurer. Then we have the, we have the replacement value claim, and that's the one that's for 8 million. There might be another one that I'm missing, but.
Yeah, and I think it's possibly good to note that that $8 million replacement cost would actually be a little bit more, would be higher in today's market. And I think to take our time and not settle too quickly to make sure we really get what's needed. I know they're not going to pay us for what it would be, what it would cost three years from now.
It was actually lower, and we're trying to get to 8 million. We feel fairly confident that we can get to 8 million, but that is already taken into consideration. So what they did is they essentially rebuilt the facility that we had. That is what our coverage provides. So they scrutinized it based on plans that we still had in our files, photographs, and they basically accounted for every nail and screw and shelf and what have you in that facility. It took months and months and months to do, and that is, they basically reconstructed that facility in today's dollars and in today's code. So code updates were included in that. And so that is how we got to something less, and then we continued to talk about with, you know, COVID and supply chain issues and the costs of everything having increased. That has been an ongoing negotiation with them, and the claim is not yet settled, but we are getting closer. We're close to finalizing it. So it's not going to be much more than eight. We're really pushing for eight.
And I want to just thank Susan, I didn't catch your last name. You taught downtown, and thank you for your comments about possibly a library foundation. I would be glad to attend any kind of black tie fundraising event that might come from something like that. You know, we've got a lot to cover tonight, and there's some other areas where people might have an important idea or thought about the way that we're going to talk about spending and directing staff to move forward with this process for this next fiscal year. And just because we're done here tonight, when we're done here tonight, doesn't mean that we're done listening. I received numerous phone calls today. I know Councilmember Meister did. I'm sure the other people up here receive those, that information as well. We'll do all we can for you guys. We're not doing this for ourselves. We're doing it for Porterville, and we'll do the best we can. And let us know your thoughts after tonight as well, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Meister.
Well, my colleagues kind of covered some of the ground that I wanted to touch on. So, you know, we have 15.2 million. We are short. The only way to get it done is to pull a bond or some kind of foundation, but that's going to take time as well. The grant fund, the 7.2 million grant fund run, it's supposed to be spent by 2026. Now, we may be able to get an extension, that's the hope, but what if we don't? Then we're left at 8 million, right? So we have to come up on these shortfalls. Talking about a bond is frightening, in my opinion. We already pay 9.25% tax rate. It's the highest in Tulare County. We are all feeling inflation. I know I could barely afford groceries nowadays, so I imagine you're all in the same world that I'm in. To continue to spin, 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 where do we have to draw a line, right? You know, the old library was 1,800 square feet. The temporary is 8,000. Now, I've gone in, in there by myself just to visit now three times, and the most amount of people I saw in there at one time was eight. So I have a hard time justifying going forward. Now, I would love, if you guys could grab my card on the way out. You said you had 1,500 kids come for food. I want to see that.
Open the Tutox meeting next time.
My card's out there. Grab it and text me. Well, so my point being is, what is the percentage of people, the population, using the library? We talked about literacy. Why don't we go to the schools and talk about Common Core and how our kids are being taught nowadays? Does that count? You're going to blame the city for what's going on. Where are we at? So I know that this may be an unpopular position here, but it's not the city's job to teach the kids, right? We want to provide services. Now, there was discussion, a comment, so I've received multiple calls today on both sides, and there was someone that kind of shared one of my ideas, so I'm going to go fully into it. And that is, something else I want to cover. We're looking at, if you look at this budget, we're looking at $120 million in bonds for a tree tree plant. We already have a $36 million bond for the tree tree plant at the casino. We have, I don't quite know the number on the bonds for roads that was done 15 years ago for Morton going out to, is that number available?
For the bonds, it's approximately 58, 56 million, but I'd have to get back to you on what that was for.
So that's for the, the old, what we did 15, 20 years?
No, that's the city's outstanding bond debt.
Got you. So that's for the roads and the, so it's roughly 20 million in the roads then, because I was told earlier there was 36 for the tree tree plant. So we're just doing rough numbers, right? But I'm being realistic. Where do we stop the bleeding? I want a library. Now, I'm with you guys. I want this. So my thought is to consolidate different projects. You know, we have ARPA funds where we can address how we could spend those kinds of funds. So the sports complex, baseball field was a, do we need that? One baseball field at the sports complex? Probably not. There's a million dollars. If we took number nine on the agenda, the navigation center, there's $2 million put aside for restrooms and showers for the homeless. Now, we have the armory. Can we utilize that in that aspect and use this money towards the library? And then my other thought is, number four, Fourth Street Community Center and Park, we have 11.1 million. Now, something staff likes to talk about is color of money.
Excuse me. I have a question, and please, now, this is a priority study session of the projects that are here. The other would be in the budget study session? That's the, that's the question. When you start asking for the possibility of.
It's appropriate to be discussing.
Okay, that was, and I just wanted the clarification.
Thank you for the clarification, Madam Mayor. So the Fourth Street Community Center and Park is 11.1 million that we have. Now, like I said, we call it color of money. Normal people like us call it strings attached. When we get grants, there are strings attached. When the schools took the COVID money, there were strings attached to force face masks, right? So that was part of the process. There's strings attached to the grants that we have pulled. So can we make that happen? It's something I brought up with staff today. That would give us 14 million that we could push over towards creating a combined recreational center and library, something that could work together to achieve the goals for the community at large. That's my vision. I don't, I don't know if it's possible, but I wanted to share it with you because a community member that I talked to earlier kind of brought it up. And so it is a long shot, but I know that this dius wants to do everything they can to get us a library. But we cannot continue to pull bonds and continue to put ourselves further in debt that your grandchildren will have to pay off. So thank you at that, Madam Mayor.
No, and I appreciate that. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I wanted to speak to a lot of the comments about the library specifically, and just give some feedback around the, so I sit on the Library Facility Planning Committee. And so when the comments first started, I didn't know, I didn't get, I didn't have phone calls. I was at work all day and had to drive here from Fresno, and then I didn't see any comments that were going around. So I wasn't aware, so I was a little bit confused when you all started speaking about this topic. But with that, for transparency, I guess, I wanted to, I was trying to figure out how, ways to get information to the public constantly, because that was a worry for me, as you're saying, the public's not aware, employees are not informed, employees are not a part of the discussion. I didn't feel like that's true at all, because I know of all these efforts that the city does go through, through that planning committee, and then sharing that information back. So that planning committee has meetings in here that are public and on Zoom quarterly, and then when I come back to council, the meeting after that, and it's listed on the agenda of the city council meeting, we report out, and I, either myself or Donnie Moore, who's another member of that committee, or another member of the committee, offers the information. In addition to that, it's posted on the city website, because I checked during the discussion, and then I believe they may be posted on YouTube also, but if not, the city council meetings are. In addition, it's posted some of the information on Facebook, the city, and things like that. So the other thing is that we held all the focus groups before, as you all spoke of, but those were all parts of taking feedback from the community. And then recently, the meeting at the library, which one person did mention, that was a public meeting for input, but also it was a meeting for the architects to provide PowerPoint presentations on some of the findings, but also further questions about what the community wanted. And then just speaking about that, not going into the other comments, I think we get the numbers from, I've been to the library a few times, and I also view the photos, and it, there's a lot of children in there. It's packed. I think it's overcrowded. I agree on some of the unsafe conditions. I know that the officers are called out sometimes, and, you know, we're dealing with a lot of things, but I think overall, everyone is very grateful to have the temporary library. So I feel passionate about that, too, because I'm a part of the committee, so I hear all the discussion. But we also get an update from the Library Commission after all their meetings, and she provides numbers every time she provides the update. So just kind of in a nutshell, I know we do provide a lot, the meals, the snacks, the summer programs, the adult ed, the book clubs, you know, the computers, the resources there, and there's people of all ages that take advantage of it. So I don't think any of us are here to argue against that piece of importance, but that was just, was in a nutshell, some of the things I heard tonight, and I wanted to share back from the perspective of being on the Library Facility Planning Commission, which we hold quarterly. We have a meeting coming up in May, and we also have one after that, I believe, probably August. Thank you.
Thank you. I am probably the standalone here. When the library fire did happen, I was physically there, and I watched it. So you need to know that I'm very passionate to this discussion, and at that moment, at that time, we were helpless. Moving forward... Moving forward, moving forward, we had to talk about adversity and continuing to operate the city. Every year, we have priority projects. We prioritize. The library has always been at the top. We listened to the needs of our community at that time. And that is when the temporary library was placed in its temporary facility for this community, for everyone to use. There were no complaints about the size at that time. Everyone was pleased that there was a location for their children to go to. I am retired school district, so I hear those here that are in education. But I also separate and detach myself when I am looking at the agenda item. As you heard tonight from staff, this was not something that we were going to dismiss. It was number one on our priority subject list where it has been placed the last four years. It has always been there as a priority. I understand sensitivity. I get that. I see it from three ways. Physically being there, being a part of the temporary facility, now engaging in conversation to the possibility of seeing this come to fruition. There have been discussions in the past. When I first got onto council, there was a meeting that was actually held, I believe, with library and commissioners or to that regard, about the possibility of a nonprofit. That was back then. And I need to tell you that there, all of this has been transparent. It's information that is available to you, the history of it. All you have to do is call and speak to our city manager is where I would direct you, and she would direct that communication from there on. So my passion, you can feel it because I sense that it's never been something to dismiss. But we as a council also have to look at road projects. We're the first in Porterville when we were addressing the homeless, the unhoused, the very first in Tulare County to place a navigation center. And that was done four, five years ago. Wasn't five years ago, four years ago? And we were the very first ones. Thereafter, others followed suit. I will support public safety. Fire and police department, be attentive to their needs for you as members of this community, to be able to pick up the phone so you can make a phone call. I want to thank you. It is, I will say this immediately when the conversations and oral communications, my colleague says, can we just address that now? I ignored it because I wanted to hear you. It was important to hear you and what you had to say. And my feeling to this regard, I am very grateful that you were here tonight so that you can hear that it is something that we're still looking at. It was never something that we were going to remove. That is my comment.
Can I have one more?
Please, go ahead.
The one thing I do want to add is I also appreciate you all being here and, and having the comment. At the last meeting at the temporary library where the architects provided two presentations back to back, one was to the library facility planning committee. And the committee is pretty outspoken and asks a lot of questions because a, a lot of them have years of experience working in the library or being on the commission. But there, there was a, a public, or there was a meeting for us and then right after was a public meeting. In the meeting for the committee, there was things that I didn't necessarily agree with and I had concerns. And I had that time to ask those questions specifically of things that I didn't care for. I thought we had already discussed that that was a need for us. And honestly, one was building up versus building out, you know, and, and having a cafe versus something different than that. And, you know, as I asked those questions and brought up those issues, we had a discussion on cost and, you know, what's more important, this or this? And to me, that was very helpful. And the reason I'm saying it is because those meetings are very important. If any meeting around planning, you know, and, and also viewing the, the master plan and the budgets that we always have online is really helpful to, to see the plan for this a year to five years. I, I just wanted to offer that as, you know, advice to, to try to stay active in those meetings.
Now, I have a question, and I'm looking at Mr. Wright and I'm looking at Ms. Hildreth because the question was brought up not only from a member of the community. Are there grant limitations for the community center? And let me ask this other question. Library can't be moved to Fourth Street, is that correct? And, and can community center be moved to the library?
I know the answer to half of that. The library cannot be moved to Fourth Street. I do know that. I don't know the other one.
So also in, in speaking with Mr. Moore, who reached out to the state for the Prop 68 grant, which is what's the grant that we have for the Fourth Street Community Center. Correct me if I'm wrong, but state of the state said we are also unable to move the community center to the library site.
Yes, we did ask them about a joint project. This was discussed a while back as far as a community center slash library. This had been discussed years ago with different commissions and committees and things. When the Prop 68 grant became available, we asked them if a library could be part of this recreation center, so a joint use, a joint project. Unfortunately, that Prop 68 funds required that has to have recreation features in a library according to that California State Parks, it's called a statewide parks program grant funding. They don't declare a library as a recreation feature. And so therefore, the library, a library cannot be included in any of that Prop 68 funding for that grant.
Thank you for that information. All right, council, I know that we have had the comments and that's pretty much on the library, and we have more to cover. We have more to cover, but I want to appreciate, I, the dialogue that has been engaged, the questions, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. So I'll move on. The second of those 11 items from last fiscal year's priority projects. Next are street improvements, and there are a variety with a goal of a pavement condition index. It's a PCI rating of 70. For all of its major arterial and collector streets, these projects have been identified as priorities from last fiscal year. The first one being the Main Street reconstruction from Morton to Putnam. Phase one of the Main Street reconstruction project was awarded in June 2023, and its acceptance of the work is expected to be considered in the summer of 2024 at a total cost of 1.95 million, which was funded with SB1 and LTF, which is still to be determined. That's in, that's in flux, but that is the estimated right now. Phase two is Putnam to Olive, and that is anticipated to go to bid summer of 2024 at a budgeted amount of 1.6 million, which is proposed to be funded with SB1 funds. The next streets project is the Villa Street reconstruction from Olive to Henderson, and that does include the Porter Slough crossing. This project was awarded in June 2023 and began construction in early 2024. It is currently under construction. The project includes significant underground work, including storm drains, sewer water, recycled water line installation. This project is budgeted at 13.2 million with a variety of funding sources due to the extensive work that is included in the project. Funding sources, it includes Measure I, water replacement funds, sewer revolving fund, SB1, and Measure R local funds. Moving on, we do have Union Street reconstruction from Indiana to J Street. And this one, Mayor, you are conflicted, just for the record.
I'm conflicted on that.
This project is currently under design during fiscal year 2425. Design and right-of-way acquisition is budgeted with Measure I funds, approximately 90, almost 100, 91,000 for design and 750,000 for right-of-way acquisition. The project is projected to have more components due to the area being initially developed in the county with different development standards. The next streets project is the Henderson Avenue rehabilitation, Westwood Street to Patsy Street. This project is currently under review as it requires updates to the city's master plan in order to move forward. There's also a residential development currently under construction, which is the Brookside subdivision, that could impact this project. So it is proposed that this project will be appropriate to move forward in more of the 26, 27 fiscal year timeframe. Next is the Morton Avenue rehabilitation reconstruction. This project is under design with the completion, the Morton Avenue reconstruction is currently under design with the completion of design work and environmental analysis being completed in the 2425 fiscal year with 500,000 budgeted for design and 150 for environmental work, and that will be funded with Measure I. Due to the Southern California Edison project to underground existing overhead electrical lines, that is the Rule 20A, the reconstruction project is delayed. So in the meantime, city crews have completed overlay work to revive and extend the life of the existing surface long enough for the designs to be completed, as well as the Edison project to move forward. The Castle Avenue extension, and it does appear that Councilmember Wyrock, you may be conflicted on this due to your residents being?
No, they're.
Okay. In an effort to mitigate traffic congestion issues associated with drop off and pickup at the Summit Charter Academy Lombardi Elementary School, the city continues to work with the property owner to acquire and construct the Castle Avenue extension during fiscal year 2425. 750,000 has been budgeted utilizing STP, that's Surface Transportation Program funds, for design and right-of-way acquisition. The next project, that, that does it?
I have a question on that, Madam Mayor, if I may. We had put ARPA funds, and I, I meant to ask this back in our meeting. We had put ARPA funds aside to this, and it has to be spent by 2026, I believe. Is there, have we redirected that funding? Correct, Councilmember. Due to the delay in this project, as you know, you've been a, a part of those meetings and with the property owner and the difficulty of the project, the feasibility of having those funds obligated by the end of this year and then fully expended by '26. So we found other funding sources that could be utilized for the project. That's what we're looking at, the STP funds for the design, and then we'll be able to allocate other road dollars and then utilize the ARPA funds towards project, such as the Fourth Street project, as we were looking for that.
Yeah, thank you. And, and there was just comments earlier about Lombardi and Snot addressing the issue, and there's been a lot of work going into this, this road, and I just wanted to point that out. So thank you.
So that does it for the streets project from the last priority projects. So moving forward, the tertiary treatment facilities. The Joint City Tulie River Tribe Tertiary Treatment Facility became operational at the sports complex in May 2024, with services beginning at the casino in the May-June timeframe that is projected. The proposed tertiary treatment facility to be located at the courtyard is in environmental review. Environmental review is estimated to be approximately $300,000, and design is budgeted at 1 million, which is to be funded by certificates of participation. The next project is that Fourth Street Community Center and Park. Design is underway for this project and is nearing finalization. The bid phase is next, followed by construction. Similar to the other capital improvement projects, the construction cost estimate for this project has significantly increased since the city's successful grant application submittal in 2019. The prior year's estimated cost of 15 million has now increased to 20 million. After design, 6.3 million remains from the city's State Parks Prop 68 grant award. In fiscal year 2324 budget, the city council approved the 3.2 million in ARPA funds for the project in addition to the allocated 900,000 of Measure R alternative transportation funds. This project is currently underfunded by 8.9 million dollars. We think we've figured that out by basically the timing of the project in the next fiscal year. We believe that it will push it also into the following fiscal year of '25, '26, which would then provide for the funding to complete it. The next project is the new animal shelter facility. This project consists of the rehabilitation of the former Citibank building on D Street, and construction is anticipated to be finalized in the May-June 2024 timeframe. This project consisted of many components, including frontage and utility improvements and a dog park, and had a total budget of approximately 7.3 million. The project was funded with a variety of sources, including 4.85 million in ARPA funds, Measure Air, Measure R air quality funds of 1,025,000, local transportation funds, 7,775 dollars, building construction fund, and private donations of 315,000. General Fund Capital Construction Improvement Fund, 160,000, and an anticipated 500,000 from the sale of the existing facility in Lindsay. So as I said, we've cobbled together a multitude of different funding sources for that project's completion. It is scheduled to begin operations in summer of 2024. We're really excited about that, and we will be having a, like an open house, if you will, and tours. The sixth item is the Serious Accident Review Team. That's the SART recommendations, and this came from the library fire. Fire station remodel project designed for a remodel of stations 71, 72, and 73 is budgeted at 363,454 dollars with funding projected to be from Measure I. This project will allow for the fire stations to house additional fire personnel, as was recommended by the SART, as well as accommodate new fire apparatus. And also a part of that SART recommendation was the Emergency Operations Center, and the design for the new EOC is budgeted at 1.25 million with funding from the OES Services Grant, I'm sorry, the OES Grant. Centennial Plaza has been evaluated for feasibility to convert the facility into a regional EOC. The design is scheduled to begin the fall of 2024. Next, we have the Sports Complex Baseball Field. The city council did approve 1 million in ARPA funds in the fiscal year 2324 towards the development of a lighted baseball field. Design is anticipated to be completed by fall 2024. 832,850 will remain after design, which is an estimated 650,000 short of the constructing, constructing the lit baseball field. The sports complex additionally has 61,000 remaining to implement further lighting improvements, which is insufficient funding to complete that project. Next is the Henry Street Park. During fiscal year 2324, the city began partnering with Community Services Employment Training, that's CSAT, in a multi-year state grant-funded program to implement property improvements, including dredging of the pond, repairing the exterior fence, and miscellaneous landscape improvements and amenities. During fiscal year 2425, it's projected that staff continue to work with CSAT to complete site improvement projects as grant funds become available. 212,000 in insurance proceeds from the fire of the former residence remains available for improvements. It is estimated that the 1.1 million is needed to complete the design, park amenities, restroom, and parking lot at that facility. Next is the Skate Park Shade Structure and Lighting. This project, funded by 178,000 in state Prop 68 formula grants, was completed fiscal year 2324. The project consisted of the skate park amenity improvements as well as a shade structure funded by Measure R air quality funds of 142,000 dollars. And as part of a federally funded Veterans Park Trailway Phase Two project, which will also include the lighting of the facility there. Number 10 is the State Route 65 and 190 Community Welcome Sign. Staff has identified locations on State Route 65 at the 190 and the 65 overpass for the development of welcome signs to the community. In addition, staff is working with Caltrans to have Porterville be inlaid into the roundabout at Westwood Street and 190, and staff does continue to work with TCAG on the funding of that signage. Lastly, from the last fiscal year is the American. Lastly, from the last fiscal year is the American Rescue Plan Act. Those are ARPA funds. The city received approximately, well, exactly, 19 million, 984,717 dollars in federal ARPA funding, of which initially 10 million was restricted for use for specifically designated purposes associated with COVID-related activities, with the remaining balance unrestricted. That did change when they opened up and basically unrestricted most of the funds. These funds must be obligated by December 31, 2024, and expended by December 31, 2026. To date, the city has obligated approximately 12 million, 200,000, leaving 7 million, 784,717 to be obligated by the end of 2024. Throughout, we have sprinkled ARPA funding throughout the projects that we believe will be, have the best chance of being obligated by the year end. So I think, based on our estimate, I think we have approximately 40,000 remaining after we look at all the projects that have been assigned ARPA funding.
Question on it?
Please, go ahead.
I know, working with our county supervisor and them talking about the additional million-dollar ARPA funds, is that counted in this amount?
That's in addition.
That would be in addition to this number? And my question to this, is there strings attached to this money? Does it have to go to the homeless? If you could...
Yes, Councilmember, you're correct. The funding that is going to be provided from the county has to be used for homeless services, not capital projects. And so we are working with the county to be able to best utilize those funds and best to, the city is obligated, funds to use in homeless services of our own, so this will help us to be able to utilize those funds and free up additional ARPA dollars that we may have been, that we were intending to use for those homeless services that could assist in some of these projects as well.
Thank you for that. And so, you know, I had the brainstorm idea of trying to consolidate projects, and I want to thank staffer texting the mayor and getting clarification on what we can do as far as strings attached with different grants. So, just in layman's terms, when we get that million dollars, we could utilize it. And my thought is, can we utilize it on the navigation center and just being fully transparent to the people, and then utilize that other million dollars in another project somewhere else? Is that doable?
The funding from the county has to be for services only. Currently, we're not utilizing ARPA dollars for services at the navigation center. There is ARPA dollars that have been considered for the navigation center or for capital projects, not for services. So when I speak of services, I think of, you know, the city has expended general fund dollars, if you will, at the Armory. And so being able to utilize those funds at the Armory, as well as with our SMART team. So the staff utilizes ARPA funding for the SMART team that provides homeless services to our community. So we'll be able to utilize those ARPA dollars for the SMART team.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for the question. Okay. So that concludes the projects that were basically carryovered from last fiscal year. The notable projects in progress or expected to begin during the 24, 25 fiscal year are as follows. The Main Street Downtown Parking Lot, that is the old J.C. Penney site. This project is currently in design with construction to be completed in the Main Street Reconstruction Project Timeline. The project includes extensive work involving the culvert and will require coordination. This project is proposed to be funded with Measure I, with an estimated cost of 1.15 million. Next is the Montgomery Avenue Reconstruction, J2H. This project has an estimated cost of 1.65 million and is to be funded with Measure H. The Westfield Avenue Master Plan Utilities. This project consists of capacity improvements for the growth of the northwest quadrant of the community. The project is budgeted at 3.7 million and includes the relocation of Sewer Lift Station 18, with increased force main improvements and additional emergency storage. The next project is the Plano Street at SR 190 Roundabout Project. This is a Caltrans project. With design and right-of-way acquisitions scheduled to take place during fiscal year 24, 25, design is budgeted at 1.518 million and property acquisition at 1.1, with funding coming from CMAC. Plano Street at College, this is also a Caltrans project with design and right-of-way acquisitions scheduled to take place during fiscal year 24, 25. It does have the same budgetary numbers of 1.5 for design and 1.1 for property acquisition, again with funding coming from CMAC. The Westwood and State Route 190 Roundabout, yet again, another Caltrans project that is projected to begin construction during the summer of 2024, at an estimated cost of 3.7 million, with funding from Measure R Regional Funds. The next item is the Wells, Two Well Projects, number 34 and 37, equipping and construction. 3 million is budgeted for the construction and equipping of well number 34 that is located near Henderson Avenue and Westwood Street. Construction is scheduled for spring of 2025. This water project is actually funded by the State Water Resources Control Board. And then the other well is number 37, which is located near Newcombe and River Springs, with construction expected to begin 2025 at an estimated cost of 3 million, and that is also funded, that one is funded with water reserve funds. Next is the Butterfield Stage Corridor Trail Development, and that's West North Grand to Yates. Construction for this project is scheduled to commence in the fall of 2024, consisting of the development of a bike and ped trailway. This project is estimated to cost 20.2 million, with funding sources including the Active Transportation Program Grant, Measure R Alternative Transportation Funds, and related master plan funds. The next project is the Navigation Center Expansion. As approved by the city council, 2 million in ARPA funds was budgeted for this project to install restroom and shower facilities at the Navigation Center. This project is scheduled to go out to RFP in the summer of 2024. Next is the Multi-Sport Field Improvements, the Santa Fe Sports Complex. And this project consists of the development and installation of mini-pitch and multi-use fields, restroom facilities, and storage. Funding for this project includes 1.7 million of CDBG funds and 300,000 in Measure R Alternative Transportation Funds, and this project is currently under design. Next is the Santa Fe Byway. This project is funded by Measure R Alternative Transportation monies, in the amount of 2.1 million and a Clean California Grant Award of 2.9 million, consisting of improvements to the existing trail, new amenities, and art. This project will be completed this summer. The next project is the Tulie River Parkway Phase III. This project has been delayed due to the March 2023 flood event and continued water in the project area, the Tulie River. Project is scheduled to begin in the summer of 2024, with a total construction cost of 3.5 million, with funding from CMAC and Measure R Alternative Transportation Funds. And lastly is the OHV Park. The city received 1 million in California State Parks OHV Development Grant Funds in October of 2023, to fund a portion of a new OHV park in anticipation of the relocation of the existing facility. The required matching funds to complete the construction of the new park is proposed to come from the sale of the existing OHV park property. In an effort to explore various options in order to potentially fund other competing projects with sooner deadlines, such as the Fourth Street Community Center, city staff has confirmed with the state that should the city elect to terminate its development grant award for the OHV, it would not affect future submittals, and the city could apply for said funding at a later date. The estimated appraisal amount for the existing OHV is 2 million dollars. And that is a lot with that...
City Manager Hildreth, if you don't mind. There was one project in reviewing this that I noticed that was inadvertently omitted that will be, that is currently in design, and the design will go through next year with construction scheduled for '25, '26, and that's the Scranton-Westwood-West War Three Alignment. So we call it the West Street Extension Project. That project is funded with regional Measure R, as well as proposing CMAC funds and the community reinvestment funds that we received from the federal government. So that design is, environmental design is underway currently. So we'll also be looking at right-of-way acquisition in the next fiscal year, with the construction to be completed in '25, '26.
Thank you.
Was there a finance on that? Did you say it? I must have...
Yeah, so that'd be Measure R Regional Funds, CMAC Funds, as well as the Community Investment Funds. So that is the fund that we got from the federal government.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rednauer. And with that, it is the recommendation to staff that the city council consider and determine its priority projects for the upcoming fiscal year 24, 25, and we are certainly available for questions.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing this to the table and setting the priorities, because there's a lot of projects that need to be completed, maybe not all, and in the order, because they've been carried over pretty consistently over the years. And, you know, the road repairs, the street improvements, the other projects that were mentioned here. But I'm gonna ask my colleagues, I'm gonna start with Councilmember Beltran. Is there any questions, concerns, or anything that you'd like to bring to the table? There's a lot.
Yeah, I think, I want to compliment staff, because a lot of people ask for transparency, and, you know, where's the money going? And I heard some disparaging stuff on social media, which I know they say, "Don't read." But we gotta hear people's comments, but it's, you know, every one of these items states what funds are being utilized, how much, projected year that these will come to fruition. And just my short time on council, you realize some of these projects have been in the work for like 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. Because money constantly changes our costs, I'm just gonna make one comment about a road improvement project, and that was Villa. And last year, this, it was on the priority list, and it was 3.9 million. But once the crews got out there and started digging up, and then they find stuff with the storm drains, as it indicates here, the sewer, the water, recycled water lines, that project ended up being 13 million dollars. So it's not a matter of where's the money going. There's some unforeseen things that happen, and tried, instead of doing the minimal repair and then five years later having to tear out the street, because there's, these improvements need to be done because of a master plan. I said this, I had a staff meeting earlier this morning to kind of review some of these, and my comment was some, I wish we could share some of this, these small meetings that we have. It was, I think altogether, it was a two-hour meeting I had. But just so you guys could see how diligently staff does work to make sure that when there's a project that comes up, that it's not wasted funds, that if something needs to be, you get done. One thing that wasn't on here that was on last year's party was Newcombe. That, just like Villa, ends up being multimillion-dollar, way over budget, and so you didn't see that on this list, where it was a priority last year. But that doesn't mean it's being ignored. They're going to end up just resurfacing it rather than the reconstruction, so that the funding, it might be three or four more years out, but the city will address the need because it is, is needed. But this goes back to the priority. It's not that it doesn't need to be, get done, is we only have so much funding. And in that time, I believe, there'll be the, same thing like Villa, a lot of the underground water, sewage, all that stuff could be updated. And so, I know there was a comment earlier by the public about mismanagement of funds or what have you. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it was, I believe we had a double A, I don't know if it was plus rating or something, when we had an assessment done. And so the city is really fiscally responsible, as much as we would like to have stuff done. As you see, all these different grants, there's timeframes that are attached to these projects. Sometimes they can't get done, so something's got to be moved or, you know, put on the back burner. So just so the public that is here and that will be viewing it online through YouTube, we're doing a great job with what we have to work with, and just as much as there can be bickering about, "I want my road repaired," or "we need a park," whatever it might be, even the fire stations, you know, our first function as a city is services with protection of the fire, police, and the infrastructure, water, sewer, everything's up to date. There's a lot of regulations through the state of how much water or land usage, and so you just know that this staff, as much as sometimes people like to beat up on them, they're juggling so many plates at the same time. And I haven't seen them break anything yet. None of those plates have fallen. They're just spinning at different speeds. So with that, just, you know, I hope the community can go online. Usually our agenda packets are like four, five, 600 pages. This one's like 10. So just to really break down all the information that the staff works on in a year, it could be surmising this little nugget that you could kind of swallow easier. So just hats off to, I hate that we're, it seems like we're always patting you guys on the back, but this is a very tough job. And as the people that stood with us for this long, because everybody's like, "I'm out of here, this is boring," or "I'm not interested," this is what they do daily. So it just, thank you again. It's a privilege to sit up here, and sometimes it feels like it's a hard job, but you guys make it really easy, so thank you.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Quick question to begin. Are we going to, I have a lot of questions and thoughts. Are we just gonna make a quick comment, and then is there gonna be a motion? Or are we gonna do not a deep dive into these numbers? Because I can go either way, and I'd just like to hear from the council, your direction and your plan before I...
Well, this is just direction.
Okay.
And pretty much direction, what's placed before us, and we give them direction. We're not taking motion to move and all of that. It's just, we give them the direction so that they're aware of where to place and go move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Beltran, your comments about the staff and their ability to do great work is recognized by, I think, everybody up here and everybody that watches or attends these meetings. You know, lately, we've been seeing a lot of cost overruns when we project the budget amounts, and then we get a change in the budget. It's usually not from a change order or for some kind of impact, cost overruns or whatever. I think the city does a great job with the contract administration and the contract itself for the contractors working within the city. But, you know, I'm looking through here, and I was just wondering, with all of the active projects that we've completed in the last two years, what we accounted for, what we budgeted for initially, and then maybe an add-on because of a change order, are we bringing in our projects at the original estimate or within 25% of the original estimate? I know we put on this little, this little 10% just in case. Is 10% enough? And with these numbers in fiscal year 2024, '25, is it kind of based on that, or are we going to be meeting at city council all the time with, you know, additional costs?
So I can begin to address that, and Mr. Sanchez is here, who's, his department's engineering and project management, who could address it as well. I would say that our engineering staff, with every project that's completed, we get additional numbers of what current rates are. So they are continually using those numbers for the most current rate. Now, Mr. Sanchez may be able to address the projects of roundabout percentage that may have gone over the 10%.
Right, and over the last few years, one of the biggest impacts on project costs was COVID and its effect on labor and product supply. You know, things were spiraling out of control, whether it's steel, plastic, even wood spiked for a while. And so there's that. And then here, within the last year, one big impact on projects has been the effects of the storms of last year. And so, in talking with our counterparts at the county, they're still working on flood projects because, you know, they have a greater area than ours, and they're still very involved in that, whereas on our end, we're on the tail end of those things. But what they've been experiencing is just, it's bigger at the state level, where the contractors are stretched, the designers are stretched, everybody's still... Everybody's still trying to close the loop on that flood response. And I'd say, you know, during that whole time, we, the estimates have been frustratingly off, you know, anywhere from 20 to 35, sometimes 40%. I think the last few, we've been, been within 10% plus or minus. So we're hoping that things somewhat normalize and we're at least within a more acceptable tighter window.
Thank you. And meeting with staff today, I appreciate the feedback on the delays that may come with engineering, and that's pushing projects out further. And we shared the, or it was shared with me, and I really appreciate having on the top of every strategy report, like on bridges and streets, projects, and inflationary factor of like 3.25% and how those, that 3.25% risk of increased cost is real. And I made a suggestion that if there's some areas within these projected budgets that, and these, these spreadsheets go out 10 years. And are there some larger dollar, or even smaller dollar, but the larger dollar ones, can we impact or, you know, condense the schedule? And instead of starting a large project five years out, can we start it three years out? And, and, and get it to bid and get it started? And I know that's a, it's a balance of all the different funding sources coming in. But I would encourage the staff, you know, if you're asking for my humble direction, it would be to find ways to get engineering done faster through the consultants we have, get these projects started faster, try to get this work going and so that we don't experience these, these potential cost overruns. That would be my, my first suggestion and, and offer. It's amazing how expensive lights are for recreational facilities. And just to design, the lighting is huge. And I'm seeing these design costs being so high. And, and I can just imagine what the follow-on construction will be. And these reports show us how we're gonna spend the money. So all in all, I really love this package. I like the way it's split out. I like the way that it gives us the details, specifically in these different departments, where they want to spend the money. I did share that, you know, the streetlights and pedestrian crossings, in particular pedestrian crossings, that we have some scheduled for next year, but they're not really, the high budgetary things, they are costly. But if we can really focus on public safety sooner, quicker and, and move some of those funding sources around that are allowable, I'm a big proponent of that. And I know that we've talked about safe, safe pedestrian crossings in some areas where the traffic impact may not be such or the pedestrian access may not be such that it deserves a study. And then, you know, you put this whole thing together and a year and a half later, we build a crosswalk. It'd be nice to find a way to just speed that along and, and, and find these intersections that, and we have found them, and there's budgeting items in there. But if we could move those forward, I think that would be great. That'd be some of my direction. And then water. Getting as much water reserved for as far into the future as possible. I'd love, love Porterville to be known as the city in California where we don't have a water issue, we don't have a water problem, and people come to us on how we did it. And we've got the team here in Porterville that's putting this all together. And, you know, if there's a way we can drill a well sooner, if there's a way we can outfit a well sooner, and I applaud having these equipment plugs in here to outfit a couple of wells in the coming year, that's huge. But if we could just get more and more water pulled, pulled in for, for as far out into the future as possible, I think that would be a solid investment for the company or for the, for the city. Storm drained water, you know, there's other little comments here and there. I just can't believe a community center costs north of $12 million. But it is what it is. And I spoke earlier, last, last comment for now, well, two more. In the, in the police capital improvement strategies, there was an EOC design of $1,250,000, I think. And I don't see it in the capital improvements here. And I don't see a construction cost laid out in the future of what it would cost to build it on page 23 of the report. And then on water, I didn't see anything for the Hope School that I brought up earlier in a staff meeting to make sure that we have that put in here if it's the place to put it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Meister.
Well, I, I don't wanna, it's, it's not that the staff needs rescuing or, or the pat on the back, but there were statements tonight that were misinformed. Our city manager works very hard and she is transparent. And then the statements of money being misdistributed and threatened of lawsuit, I think is misinformed as well. And, and I, I thank you guys for continuing that path of transparency and letting the people know what's going on. I greatly appreciate that. And for the people, you know, for myself, COVID-19 was an eye-opening experience where I realized how important it is to be involved in your local government all the way to the top and paying attention to government. And as Americans, it's naturally for us to, to not trust government. So, so thank you for coming in and speaking up on, on this issue. I know there was some stuff going around online. Hopefully, we kind of settled that tonight. We, I, I know that the voice of this body wants a library. We want to get it done. And I know staff echoes that as well. Staff, thank you for giving me the bond numbers tonight. I know I brought you that question today and you guys were able to get it. I also bought, brought the idea of consolidating the different projects and you were able to get that answer to the clarification. So hopefully, there's not misinformation out there that I am spreading. We cannot combine the Fourth Street project with the library. So that's not something doable. I want to thank staff for getting, getting to work, I guess we could say, on, on Putnam to all of Main Street. This is big for our community and I'm excited to see it done. This will complete Main Street. And then something in my own district, working with our county supervisor, Dennis Townsend, a left turn safety lane project at North Grand and Old Main Street. It's something that I'm excited to see coming forth. And then Councilmember Wyrock brought up the lighted crosswalks. I, I think I, I would, I don't know if I could second that, but I, I agree with him. If there's any way that we can move up some of these projects that are pushed out to 2526, if there's a way that we could get this done to make it safer for the children of Porterville on these busy roads that, during the rush hour of the day, I think it's a really good thing. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. So I think I'm, I'm really grateful for this opportunity as well. I think because of all the information that we're able to get. One of the things for me is, this is my fourth year now being a part of this. And I'm fortunate enough that when I was first on, first year or two, I had experienced council members. And that helped because of the history. So the questions that I had that I, you know, had on the funding or the budgets or is, why is this a priority? The discussion up here really helped me in addition to the presentation. And then I think that also, one of the things, you know, we still have as council members is access to the staff. And I feel like anytime there's a question or we have an idea or a suggestion or like a vision that, that we think, we feel for our community, we're able to talk to the staff and get perspective and facts that help us make a good decision. If that's something we really want to do or it's something that we thought was a great idea. And maybe it still is, but at least we have considerations of facts that are provided to us and specifically money, where it comes from. And, you know, I, I remember Mr. Lawless telling us as we had different projects and also in the budgets, like we want to use some of the funds for different things. He said, "Okay, where do you want to take it from then?" And that was eye-opening to me because, okay, we have all these, these are important. And then here's our project or an idea. What do you want to take from? Tell me and we can work on that. So they don't carry the purse strings. They give us information and we're expected to do the best for our community based on what we have. And I think what I'm so impressed with by the staff is just the ability to give us options. So it's almost the opposite of, of sometimes what they're accused of is to give us all these options of how we can move the funds. And you heard that when Councilmember Meister asked about certain things, you know, we could move those funds around if needed, or they're always trying to do that. So we do spend the funds that are, are coming up or which funds do we use specifically for? Like they are tied to things and services and just trying to be creative about where we can use those or not and before they, they run out. I feel like these are all, I, I get excited whenever we talk about all these projects because I think they're gonna be a benefit. And not just for myself as a council member, not for us as a body, but for our community and our future. Because like was mentioned, this, these aren't gonna happen overnight. They're gonna be here for our kids and the people in our community. So I, I really appreciate that and that's what I'm excited. I, you know, was born here as well. And I like seeing all the, the things, the growth and, and things that we have for, for here, for our community. With that, I don't really have any questions or comments. I think that the council members asked good questions. I think the, the staff addressed some of the issues that were brought up. And again, that helps me to make decisions. I'm okay.
You're okay. I'm glad you're okay. Now, moving forward. First of all, I want to say, thank you for the request for the lighting to that regard. However, me looking at the projects that are on the list and in the order that they've been presented, they're all important. All of them are. Not one is not. And they've been working on them for such a long time. And I would like to see all the projects that are on this list be continued, be finished before anything new is added to the plate this year and move in the direction of what is placed before us. We're here to give direction and staff has been writing, because I've been watching them. And they've been taking a lot of notes to that regard. I want to thank each of the council members on the dais because it's always good to have the discussion. All of us, regardless, because sometimes we ask the questions and we have to wait a minute, let me ask the question if that's okay, you know, to bring it to the table. But this is good. And if the council, we, we're here to give direction on the priority projects. Is the council good with what was presented tonight? We are? I, we don't need motion, do we? We just need to give the direction?
It would be helpful.
We're not adding anything? Okay, well, then you've made the motion. Okay, I'm, you've, I'm, you've made the motion. I'll second. No further discussion. Let's call for the vote. Passage unanimous, 5-0. I appreciate everyone. And with that being said, it is.